This time, Councilmember Hammond, do we have a quorum, sir?
Yes, sir, we do have a quorum.
Fantastic. If you will, for just a moment, let us pray. Heavenly Fathers, we gather as an elected body and a community, we ask for your grace and your mercy, Lord, and your wisdom. If you will bestow that grace upon us as we make decisions on behalf of our community for the benefit of all of our citizens, our businesses, and our staff, in your name we pray. Amen. Item B, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, you have an agenda before you. I will note via meeting with staff earlier this morning in email, there is an amendment needed to the agenda. On the very back, you'll see with a sticky note. That is an item that did go before committee in reference to infrastructure. And if we could have a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment, adding it as number eight.
Make a motion to approve the agenda and add actually item number eight.
Thanks, sir. Have a motion in the second half. Do add that.
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor? Opposed, say. At this time, counsel, in your packet, you have proclamations. Not going to read through all of them, just wanted counsel and our citizens to be aware, there was a Great American Clean Up for 2024 proclamation for Keep Chickens Beautiful. I encourage the public to go look that up. There's a proclamation on Child Abuse Awareness Month that the chairman and I took part of and signed. And there's also a Vietnam War Veterans Day proclamation. And so, counsel, those are all included in your packet. Moving on to the next item, you have your consent agenda, counsel. Act presented and discussed. Floor is open for a motion.
We like a motion, would we accept the consent agenda?
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say? Thank you, counsel. This time, we're going to open a public hearing for the rezoning of 268 Hood Road. The public hearing is on the rezoning of 268 Hood Road from M1 General Industry to C2 General Commercial. Ms. Mary Elizabeth Burgess.
Thank you, counsel. Mary Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. Just going to take this off so I can read a little. Before you have a request for rezoning from C2, I mean, sorry, N1 to C2 at 268 Hood Road. So, the existing conditions out there, about 2.15 acres. They do have a septic on site. And frontage is 300 of linear feet on Hood Road with an existing structure. You might remember that as the radio station. And that building is just over 1,500 square feet. So, some surrounding uses. To the south, you have the utility shop. To the north, you have the old shoe factory, which is now a medical fabricator. To the west, you have the Silkex Ventures. And then, to the east, you have the cabinet makers. So, basically, when we're looking at these, we run them through the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance. One of those is to make sure that it is consistent with our comprehensive plan. This project is located in what is referred to as the North Jasper Corridor, which is a mix of C2 and M1 uses. Some things that we consider as a criteria is whether the subject property under the proposed amendment is in conformity with the comprehensive plan. So, with this being a mix over there, I would say it is definitely in performance, rezoning it to a C2. The property, as it is right now, is M1, would be able to sell or be able to be used as an M1 property. So, they would not be losing anything if the rezoning did not go through. The radio station is going to stay as an office. So, they will be splitting the parcels in order to accommodate. And so, the... So, the APIM would like to use the property as an event space, approximately a 50 by 120 or 6,000-square-foot metal building. We have discussed the requirements per the ordinance for allowance of metal and 10% facade. So, the building will either be brick, stucco, or the facade will either, facade and associated sides will either be brick, glass, stucco, or hardy board. So, in the 1980s is when that radio station was constructed. And so, it has just been that on that two-acre property. It slopes gently down. It's pretty much flat. So, with taking all these things into consideration, the planning commission and staff recommend approval. There are a couple of contingencies that we'd like to add to that approval. Would be, this property is limited to C2 uses except for the following. Anything to do with childcare and gas station, whether or without the convenience store. As an event space, we see this being used in evenings and on weekends when most of that construction, hard industry is going on during the day. We don't want to define those types of traffic patterns. So, by eliminating the childcare and also the gas station just because of the existing situation of Hood Park Road, Hood Road itself, just being narrow and heavily traveled with heavy traffic, heavy machine traffic. As usual, they will have to go through site plan review and have to be in compliance with all of our pertinent regulations, such as buildings, environment, floods, streets, curbs, utilities, vegetation, as stated. Lastly, the third rezoning condition is that there is no guaranteed availability of water in sewer infrastructure.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak about or on this during the public hearing? Saying no further comment, I believe we can close the public hearing. Next item, counsel, unfinished business. Number one, consideration approval for alcohol license for Woodbridge General Store LLC. I have a staffer in this room, Ms. Smith, but feel comfortable, please.
Thank you, ma'am, and counsel. As you may recall, on the December 4 meeting, we brought forward an application from the Woodbridge General Store LLC to sell wine by the package at 18 North Main Street. This license is not an allowed use in the city. So, we have worked with Ms. Flint, who is the applicant on this, and she has amended her original application to change to a wine specialty shop license. Ms. Flint has submitted these changes, as well as that the advertising requirements and background check have been completed and there were no discrepancies. So, I was asking for approval on a wine specialty shop license for Woodbridge General Store, applicant holder Janet Flint, address 18 North Main Street, for a wine specialty shop.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion, this be approved.
Second. Motion in the second half, any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say? Thank you, counsel. Item number two, technical authority holdings LLC ceasing assistance field for 191 Interstate South Drive, Jasper, Georgia. Joint agreement is to be continued until 6/3/2024, per the city attorney. Yield the floor for a motion to approve that continues until 6/3/2024. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Having a motion, a second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say? Thank you, counsel. Moving on to new business. Number one, consideration approval of ordinance 2024 Dex 04, request to rezon tax map parcel J803107268 Hood Road from M1 General Industry to C2 General Commercial. Mary Elizabeth Burgess, one more time.
Thank you. Mary Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. As we just went over, we are asking staff and planning commission is recommending approval for 268 Hood Road to be used as an event space, changing from M1 to C2 with the conditions that were previously discussed.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Second.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, my honor.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned sewers, there already city water there, the supply net.
As far as I know, yes.
I expect there won't be. So, sir.
It's the applicant here?
Yes, the applicant.
Want to make sure you understand the conditions and accept them.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say? Thank you, counsel. Item number two, consideration approval to award bid of Pioneer Road improvements project to Johnson Painting LLC. Mary Elizabeth Burgess.
Thank you. Mary Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. So, on May 15th, we put this project out to bid. This has been an ongoing problem over there on Pioneer Road. So, after we went out to bid, we had four bidders return everything complete. The lowest bidder was Johnson Painting LLC with $224,809.50. I'd ask that you would award this contract to Johnson Painting.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion, a second. I have a second discussion, counsel. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say? Thank you. Item number three, consideration of approval of Jasper City Hall ADA parking task order number eight from Kimball Horn.
Thank you, Mary Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. In front of you, you have a task order for us to have some ADA parking out in the front area of City Hall. This will help with our compliance overall for USDA loan. What we think this project is, is to add two spots to the left of the flat closed. One will be a van spot, and one will be a regular spot. And that the front area will be one-way only. And it will be signed and everything that it is supposed to be in order of compliance. In order to do this, we needed the engineers to design this because there is a almost 5% grade change from this, from the front door down to the street. So, we want to make sure that we had, we didn't have any incidents with this, the slope being too much. So, we put this out for to Kimball Horn, and they have given us the task order. The total is for $8500, and we're asking you to approve this proceed.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Motion, we approve.
Motion, second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say? Item number four, consideration approval of ordinance provisions. Mary Elizabeth Burgess.
Yes, this was discussed at work session. This was for discussion only. We are looking to just advertise what we would like to move forward with. That includes the first item, which was to require a site plan approval before you were issued an LP. The second one was to adopt Georgia Stormwater Management Manual as our minimum standards for stormwater compliance. The third being the sidewalk policy in Lew, sidewalk in Lew, of B in Lew, for those areas that may not be able to comply. Instead, they would, instead of seeking a variance, they would be able to pay into our sidewalk fund, which will be approved by counsel. And the Streets Department will oversee that account. Also, we have the last one, which was the... Oh, I'm sorry. We have one to make sure that any area that is being used to access outdoor storage will be required to be paved in commercial areas. And then, the last one was to... I'm sorry, there's two more. One was to add wine for liquor, beer, and wine package in a C2. And lastly, to prohibit wood light poles in commercial, industrial, residential areas.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, this was discussed in the work session. Some things were removed for committee work. At this time, yield a motion. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor? Opposed, say? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Item number five, consideration approval of FEMA SAFER grant. Fire Chief John Scher.
Good evening, ma'am, and counsel. Councilor, you see, public SAFER grant, that's a statin for adequate fire protection. It's due FEMA. We've just applied for the AFG recently, which assists firefighters grant. It's also due FEMA. We're requesting permission to apply for this grant and request six personnel with it. We plan to request already three with flood disciple this year and then the next year, and additional three. This grant, if funded, will replace this request and fund them primarily federal dollars versus local tax dollars. Total cost savings for six personnel over the period of the grant would be $618,988. Speaking of grants as well, I do want to make you aware that we just received our supply line through a different grant that we applied for that saved us $17,300. And I'm looking for approval and to apply for that grant. So, matching funds is just a call share. So, there will be no budgetary impact this year. It will come through the following year with our flood cycle.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, this was on the work session and discussed. Yield the floor for a motion.
We approve.
Motion, a second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say? Thank you, sir. Item number six, consideration of approval of American Tank Company maintenance contract. Counsel, this was discussed in our meeting. We did have a couple of questions around pricing and why the difference in pricing. Laid out in the paperwork was, were the specs for all the tanks. This did go through legal's hands. Mr. Scher, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Just that I reviewed all the contracts. We made a couple of changes just to clarify what would be paid in year 14 of the contract. The council does have the ability to get out of all the contracts or one of the contracts or any of them during, on an annual basis. And, you know, I looked at and inquired, there were a couple of tanks that were the same size and had different pricing. And the explanation was that they were in different conditions, and therefore, it would take different work to bring them up code. And so, you know, hearing the explanations, I was trying the contracts, and they made the request change.
Awesome, thank you. They've been really good to work with back and forth. Yield the floor for a motion, counsel?
Second.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second, sir.
Motion, a second. Any discussion, counsel?
I just, I think it needs to be said, this is a multi-year contract. It is significant, a significant amount of money. But it's taking on water tanks, and certainly supplement needs to be done.
It's also likely to save us money in the short-term under...
You would, you would take...
Based on staff's evaluation when we first met with the company, so...
And who currently manages the process of... Us.
We have staffing, and we've outsourced it once before on a short-term basis. This is a long-term solution compared to revisiting every quarter, you know, one or two years. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say? Thank you. Item number seven, consideration approval of maintenance agreement for the West Wing to the Park for Southern Off-Road Bicycle Association, also known as SORBA, S-O-R-B-A. Counsel, you have the agreement with you, the maintenance agreement. This is also going through legal's hands. The group has been really good to work with and will look forward to them partnering with us on the park, Town Plus Park, up there. At this time, yield the floor for a motion.
Second.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion, counsel?
Yeah, there was no funding tied to this right now, right? It's just an agreement to partner with them. And whatever that looks like in the future, we might even come across, case to case depending.
Yeah, this is a good volunteer group that will step up and help us with the park.
And does it, it was just the trails? It's not pump track or the skills track?
I imagine they'll probably pitch in a little bit as they see fit, but yeah. Yep, trails mainly. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor? Opposed, say? Thank you, counsel. Item number eight. This is the Proceed with Frontier Road Range Repair Task Order, prepared by Kimball Horn. Elizabeth Burgess.
Do you want to do what? Wake it up. There we go. Mary Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. Thank you for taking this on as an amendment. I meant to put it on after we went over it in the Development Committee. So, the Frontier Road Range improvements, you know, we see these contracts a lot that come up in task orders that we're requesting. So, I thought I'd just give you a little bit of why we were asking for these. So, this is the Frontier Road. So, right now, where it is, it's near the piney area and Frontier Road. So, it involves properties over there and a 36-inch pipe, 36-inch existing pipe with eroded head walls. So, on the far left, you're going to see, you can hear the water going, but you don't see any water coming out because it is eroded down below the pipe. It is now eroding the entire thing. The second picture that you see is the crumbling head wall and the corroded pipe. And on the third is the east portion of the pipe, what it comes up to into the creek. And the fourth area is a sinkhole about three feet off the road because of the erosion and for the insulation of the, or lack thereof, of head walls. So, Kimball Horn was asked to put together a task order to complete the engineering with this. We're kind of piggybacking on a couple of other things as well because that is, excuse me, that is also our flood plain. That is also our flood plain out there where it goes into. So, we have asked them, as while they're doing the hydrology for this project, to see exactly what size pipe is suited and how much cleaning of the stream bank area needs to be done. They're also going to help us identify flood, uh, flood, base flood elevations, BMBs. If you know anything about the FEMA mapping, they have, all of our areas that are in flood plains are just Zone As, which means they flood. But it doesn't, it's not a Zone AE, which has the elevation at which they do flood. So, by doing this, we can have the elevation shot as well and send them into FEMA to update our map layer. So, we're kind of double-dipping on this as well. So, right now, what I would like approval to move forward with the research and design phase. I would like tasks one through three to be funded, with the other two being optional. And I apologize, that comes to $45,600, not $45,000 that I previously put. So, that is what we're looking for right now, the other two optional. I think that really will deal with how well we are doing, how busy we are at that time, and whether we need them to step in and assist us with the bid package. So, I'm asking for us to move forward with this task order, and it will be coming out of the SPOX 14.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, at this time, yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the expenditure?
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that, sir. Did come from committee as well, by the way.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion, counsel?
If it comes up for task four and task five, would you come back up to...
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
I was just thinking, you said it's coming out of SPOX?
Yes.
All in favor? Opposed, say? Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, this time, we'll move into the committee reports, counsel. On A, committee reports, public safety and judicial. Have councilmembers Hans Sabine and Brandon Hammond.
March for the floor, or you're trying to think back on public safety?
No, I want to say thank you to the Fire Department, especially John Scher, about the grants that he gets. He's done a lot of work doing that. He's obtained several to improve his department, and he continues to do that. We appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Anything else?
I would say the big thing, the Derby race. We've got the Derby coming up in October. The date has been decided. We'll be talking through some different ways. Sorry if I stole the thunder there to you. But, you know, we will need to volunteer, so looking forward to that event this year.
You were good luck on that last year?
Uh, he's just a racer, not a, not a hay thrower. This year, he's gotten it for hay throwing down.
It's a lot of hay.
Thank you, committee. Committee reports, B, parks and properties, John Faust and Brandon Hammond.
Province keeps going, Norse Wiggintown. Can't wait till we finally get the opening day. I think everybody's going to be surprised. We still got plans for the backwoods to be revealed sometime. Hopefully, they'll have it up and ready. Perle Park, still waiting to hear back from the...
Yeah, and then also too, from Kimball Horn, coming out and hosting the town hall for City of Jasper. We're waiting to get those dates as well.
What's the protected, uh, Norse Wiggintown, we have one?
Not...
Do we have protected, I don't know, the Kimball Horn report?
Yes, that Kimball Horn report hit my desk about five minutes before this week. I haven't had time to review it yet. So, I will, I will disperse that as quickly as I can in the council. As far as properties are concerned, the ribbon cutting date at our apartment, we don't have the date yet. The signage was submitted this week to Kim and myself. We looked at it. Everything was approved, and it'll weigh on signs just... Committee reports, C, enterprise funds, gentlemen, and Dr. Parker.
Work continues on the wastewater plant. Looking at possible completion at end of year. Working hard to see that that gets done. Thank you for approval of the maintenance contract for the water plant. I think that is something that is needed. And this could be a significant savings in that we're tying in to a pricing that asked for a number of years. So, I was very happy when we got that report from them and that quote, and happy that it's been approved.
So, the amount of evaluation for a, to ultimately use that as its quote, rest of the work continues to get closer. I think the EPD is...
I think the EPD has been behind and now they're starting to catch up and there is some activity. And I think the next step is once our plan is approved, which we're close to having happen, we think, is that we'll get the, the geologists in there to start doing evaluations to see if there's surface water in the mines and that could be a game changer for allowing us to get those back where we can actually keep those a little bit more full. Also, the new wells that we're planning on looking for some new wells, I think that is passing into law this month where we'll be able to do that. So that's good news. And then I guess the biggest thing is that we're very close to having our final rendition of our master plan. There were a few things that we noticed as we went through it in committee. The most exciting, there's some discouraging things in that plan, of course, based on the lack of infrastructure maintenance that we've had and some potentially threatening things. But I think the exciting thing is, is that we've developed a capital improvement plan that carries us through to 2045. So, and that includes projects that need to be done and also potential ways of coming up with funds for that. So that's, that's all very exciting.
Thank you, committee. Next, D, Development and Local Infrastructure. Dr. Parker and John Faust.
I think our projects kind of were, we were having some issues with a lot of runoff as the spring rains, or like winter rains came. I think those projects are slowly getting a little bit, we're getting a little bit better handle on how to manage those projects. I think there's some renewed interest in some of the projects that we approved several years ago and beginning their construction. And maybe some new rezoning projects for residential as well. We do have some projects underway that will allow us to have obtainable housing for workforce, which is always exciting. And what's exciting to me is that we're very close to actually having some construction bonds. So we've been talking about construction bonds for about five years. We've never really been able to bite that off, but we, some of our projects, at least two that I'm aware of, hopefully we're going to have construction bonds issued on those that will protect the city and our citizens. And when, I promise that once, once we obtain our very first construction bond, I'm going to throw a party for our staff. And, and at my cost. Because I want to celebrate because it is a very powerful tool to get these developers to step up and it protects us from them coming in and, and starting a project and either abandoning it or moving on to some other project. And so it's an exciting risk preventative tool for us and, and very exciting for me. I mean, I've been on the album, made this. Thank you, sir.
Well, I think it's going to help us with our partnerships with the developers. Plus it'll help with our future planning. I mean, there's a lot of advantage to, a lot of exciting things going to Jasper.
Committee, committee fee, finance administration, committee, Julie.
Finance committee met on the 20th of March. Two items discussed that did end up on the consent agenda was the approval of Justin Payne, captain, fired marshal position. We also voted on remote work, changed, a minor change to that policy. I'm not sure we got flex time. I noticed from the meeting that there's probably something we want to add to the next consent agenda. Looks like it was left off. Continue to make corrections and updates to the personnel manual and that will go on for a while.
Anything else, committee? Thank you, both. Council, thank you for moving through the agenda quickly. At this time, on the end of the agenda, you have the mayor's update. And I'll preface this with, yes, you'll have a press release at hand when you leave here to the meeting. So the mayor and Jasper City Council hereby announce that Brandon Douglas is the finalist from their search for a new city manager. Mr. Douglas is a resident of Pickens County and has been part of our community for many years. His education includes a bachelor's degree in political science and a master's degree in public administration, both from Georgia College and State University. His professional experience encompasses more than 19 years of local government work, all in the state of Georgia. Mr. Douglas previously served as city manager in Jasper and we are delighted to welcome him back home. Thank you very much. Council, at this time, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, council. We are adjourned.